Good morning, and I want to welcome everyone to our budget review meeting. Commissioners, if you would stand and join me in a prayer and a pledge. Our heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day. We thank you for a country that allows us to get together and talk about things that impact the daily lives of our community. We ask that you watch over our first responders, our police, our firemen, and particularly those military folks who are in foreign lands away from their family. We ask that you cure this pandemic, that you send it back to where it came from, get rid of it as quickly as you can. We don't need any more sickness and death. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioners. As usual, we've got about an hour and a half to get this done because Charlie and I have a tech meeting this morning. Did you remember that, Commissioner?
I do have that on my schedule.
Yes, so what we might do, if we don't get through this, we'll take a break and then come back. We usually schedule a day and a half, two days, and I don't think it's ever taken that long since we've been here. I'm going to start it out by asking our county treasurer, Jim Hendricks, to do the... Talk to us about this initial draft and the highlights of the budget.
Certainly, the initial draft, I'll give you a list at the end of some modifications that we'll have to make to it. But if you look at the second page, just to go over the budget assumptions, the currently adopted taxes were held constant with the exception of the occupational tax, which had been deferred to increase originally from .70 to 1% on 1-121. That got pushed to 1-122, so that's been factored into this draft. No additional debt. The annual principal reduction is 2.7 million. Sheriff's Office funding would be the same as the prior year. Jail funding is at 2.3 million. I sent you an email several months ago identifying the fact that state revenue was coming in lighter than budgeted. That has continued and will have some impact on this fiscal year, although our overall position is good, so there won't be a negative position overall. The budget for '22, though, I think the revenue for the state had been assumed to improve. The information that we are getting today indicates it may not improve, so I'll keep watching that issue. If we have to make some changes to manage that issue, I'll recommend it to you in plenty of time. Cost of living adjustment for salaries baked in here is 2%. The retirement percentage has increased by the normal maximum of 12%. One was delayed last year because of the pandemic, so that we're a year behind, but it is going to do the 12% increase. So non-hazardous rates go from 2,406 to 2,695. Hazardous goes from 3,958 to 4,433. Anything else, we'll go page by page in the next three or four pages. Do you have any questions on the assumptions?
Jim, on the hazardous, non-hazardous retirement, I know several years ago, there was a move, and they did actually pass it, where we are limited to no more than a 12% increase one year from one year over the last. Is there an ending? Is there an end in sight, or is that open-ended?
Well, I think you go back to the document you were talking about. It was proposed for it to be like a four or four-and-a-half-year timeframe.
Yeah.
But that by no means is a cap.
So there's nothing that says it will stop?
I think they'll be evaluated annually, and rates adjusted accordingly.
Okay. Any other questions? Continue.
The next page, Exhibit A, shows the... It's a summary of the major capital expenditures by Department. I'll just highlight a couple. I know you've had a chance to look at all this, but in the parks, there's a capital repair and maintenance fund of $250,000. There's always a number of issues that pop up every year, not necessarily that it can be identified at the time, but throughout the year, so that pot's been placed in there to handle those items that just show up. There's the typical type of tractors, RTVs, mowers, that you would expect. The gun club, as you know with the recent article, gun club finances have exceeded expectations. It's been highly used. There was a need in that market, so everything's going real well out there. And then continuing to improve things, there's $29,000 worth of new wireless machines, an archery target, 3,500, to try to branch out for those who like archery, and even to possibly get a tournament or two eventually. Under the fire department, we have an engine carried over from this year of $209,000. That would already been approved, but time lag on ordering is not going to be in by the end of June. So that one's carried over. Then there's one new pumper at the east station of $600,000. Animal control, we put $370,000 in for the estimate for the new vet clinic. I can tell you that in looking at the plans as they develop, I will have a number of changes to present to you before the first reading to increase that either for size or for parking or for other things that are beginning to pop up that we didn't really have factored in the original number.
I think...
You've talked about some of it already. I don't know how much...
I think there's a little bit of increase there, and Mark, you might... All I can see is your head. I think after reviewing those plans and looking at things, we came up with what we think is a better solution. It's going to entail a little more cash, but in the end, I think will be better for the entire operation of animal clinic. Would that be fair to say?
It would be.
Okay. Go ahead, Jim.
And in the road department, there's an excavator of $125,000, the usual list of trucks, dump trucks, snowplows, two tandem dumps at 150 each with the snowplow equipment. In looking at the asphalting from the road fund itself, it's $679,000, and additional $521,000 from the LGEA fund. We estimate flex funds of about 300, bridge fund of about 80, for a total of about $1,580,000.
That compares with last year pretty close, doesn't it, Mark?
Yeah, if you look at the next... Two pages later, not the next page, but two pages later, there's the summary of the road for this year and last year, broken out between the road fund and LGEA fund. Yeah, you can see that the total in the two funds for the budget are about the same.
Yeah.
The... There's a little bit of difference in the state reimbursable funds from 520 down to 430, but primarily, it's very close to the same, yes.
Flex funds, they're going to be your first meeting or second meeting in May?
Yeah.
Next meeting? Before you turn that page, Jim, let me just... The gun club on those machines, I think we have an opportunity, Jordan, to purchase some one-year-old machines. They were used for a tournament, and that was about it. We can save a substantial amount of money there. Commissioner Watson and I had talked about the Yellow Creek Park pickleball, and you'll notice there's $25,000 for that pickleball court. And on mine, I've got a note to the side, and we're expecting them to raise about $25,000 for that.
But it's going to cost more. It's going to cost more than 50 to do that, isn't it?
50 for that one, and then it was the estimate, and then 40 for the total cost at Stanley was 40,000, and we're going to pay that.
I understand, but I was thinking that, I don't know why, I guess I missed it when I went back through this, but I was thinking that there was... At Yellow Creek Park, we were going to have to take the whole, every bit of it out and put it back.
I don't know, Mark. Do you? That may be it, but $50,000 was the amount that was put in there.
Yeah, the documents that I saw...
Was it 75?
I believe it was more like 75 for a total, and that includes the equipment, redoing the surface and all of that. I believe it came in at 75-ish.
I mean, I have no problem if you want to put... If we think it's going to be 75, change that to 35, and where they would raise the... Or we can... It is what it is. We've got it in the budget, but we certainly would have the funds within the parks budget. As a matter of fact, we'll probably save the $10,000 on the gun club target.
Well, why don't we make it 35 if it's okay with everybody else? And then that way, we'd be at a 50-50 split with them.
You want to do that, Jim? Just change that figure for the Yellow Creek pickleball to 35,000, and with a little note there that the pickleball association would raise 35,000.
It's one of them good old 50-50 deals.
Yeah. Well, that's the way it should be, I think, don't you?
That's a lot of money for them to raise, but we'll see what happens.
Anything else on that page that anybody wants to talk about?
I got a question. I was letting Jim finish his notes over there, though. On the new pumper, Jim, and I know we don't know until we actually bid it, because sometimes we bid them with trade-ins, but do you anticipate that we'll trade that, the old pumper in, or that it'll be passed down to one of volunteer stations?
What they typically will look at is that they'll look at the whole fleet, and if this machine is better than one at one of the volunteers, they'll swap. One of them will eventually fall off.
Sure.
You know...
I didn't hear what he said. What's he calling?
Okay, they're still... They are evaluating that. We don't know the answer, but what typically happens, when we replace one, our replacement goes to replace the worst machine or the one that needs fixed, and it'll be a trade-out.
Right.
So eventually, one will fall off, but it may not be this machine.
Okay. The other thing I might mention while we're there, under parks, the Christmas Arch drive-through tunnel, we've got listed at 25,000. In conversation, Ross, he thinks we could get sponsors that would cover that cost.
Yeah.
So there's some more money that we can put into that pickleball thing. I wanted to make sure that folks understood that the vet clinic is not costing $370,000 out of the general fund, that $200,000 is being taken out of a restricted fund, the Carl... What's the name of it? The Carl Henry Fund, where we deposit monies that have been left to the animal shelter for use for the animals.
Jim, when you mentioned having maybe higher numbers in the next few days, and you specifically mentioned parking and maybe a rework of the building, some of the stuff in the building itself, I know with COVID hitting, construction costs are way up, is what I keep hearing. Have we already factored that in?
In the animal shelter construction, have you factored in COVID costs for construction?
Just a wrong... My understanding is raw materials are way up.
In regards to the animal shelter, they are looking at alternative materials versus wood.
Okay.
If that's what we're talking about, wood has skyrocketed as far as construction materials. So like the operations center, we're looking at metal studs or block.
Okay.
So that'll be a part of plan review and that estimate once we have it done.
The estimates that you get, Mark, are not coming just out of your pocket. These are conversations that you're having with contractors...
Yes.
...who are in the process of bidding and understand the rapid increase in the cost of materials. So I would say that they already have that factored in.
Currently, that estimate that we got for the animal clinic is based on square footage from our architect. Obviously, as things change and things get moved around, when we get that final design, we'll have a more accurate estimate on that.
And as usual, once we look at that, then we have the opportunity to change things. If it exceeds the budget, we can change things and to get a lower cost on it.
Right.
Jim, on the enterprise funds?
The... Of course, that's usually where our biggest capital items are. There's an excavator of 328,000, dump trailer of 44,000, a bale wrapper of 18, fuel truck of 185, and a used manure spreader at 75,000, all at the landfill. Transfer station intends to replace the outbound scales at a cost of 66, replace a roll-off at 171, and fix a parking lot issue at the leachate trench of 25, for a total of 913,000.
Commissioner Colgar, did you tell me that they could have your used manure spreader?
Well, you sure don't have to walk behind it.
Just kidding. Enterprise fund, Jim, just for those folks who are watching or will watch, explain to them what an enterprise fund is.
Enterprise fund really takes no transfers from the general fund. It's conducted much like a regular, normal business. It generates its own cash flow, so the landfill and transfer station service fees, the last time we raised rates was in 2011, and demand has been up high enough that the cash being generated on an annual basis has so far been able to service all the costs and the capital items needed by the landfill and transfer station. So we haven't had to borrow any money at all there in the last 10 years, and we have enough cash accumulated right now to do the construction of the next sale, which was the goal. You accumulate enough cash that it just... It carries its own weight, so...
We've got... I think we have enough cash. We've got a compactor that's coming up here probably next year, I think.
Pretty quick, then a big bulldozer.
Yeah, that's a pretty expensive... Yeah, pretty expensive, so... All right, any questions, Commissioners?
Judge, to interrupt.
Yes.
I apologize. I just pulled up the quotes for the pickleball.
Yes.
It looks like Yellow Creek, total is 40,000, and the one in Stanley is 25,000.
Okay. I couldn't believe that you were questioning my memory to start with.
Well, the 70, I believe, is for us to completely take out that court at Yellow Creek and come back with something new. This is just repairing it and patching it.
Yeah, that's where I was coming from, but we'll just... We'll leave it in there. Leave it alone. I mean, either we spend it, or we... If we don't need it, we don't need it.
Leave it at 25?
No, I'd leave it at 35, just, you know, to be safe. And as I said, if we don't spend it, we don't spend it.
Are you leaving Stanley at 40?
Stanley, we're going to leave it at 20... Yeah, 40. We'll leave Stanley at 40 and the other where it's at. Okay, I see.
It's at 25.
Stanley?
He just said 25.
It's on the list at 25.
Oh, okay, well...
We want to take it to 35, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yellow Creek Park.
Yeah.
Yellow Creek Park pickleball, we said...
Stanley's at 40.
Stanley is 40. Hold on just a second. Stanley is at 40. We're going to leave it at 40. We're going to take Yellow Creek to 35, and that's what we're estimating is 50%. It's a match, so we'll leave those two, and then if we don't need the money, we don't need the money, and we're going to spend it. Are we straight?
Yes, sir.
Leave it to an engineer? Next page, I guess we're going to go back to your road fund or resurfacing, or pretty much you've gone through that.
I don't have anything else to say on it unless I'm asked a question.
Any questions, Commissioners? Mark, how many miles of road does that pave? How many have we got?
Just at 30,000.
30.
Oh, I'm sorry, 30 miles.
30 miles?
Yes.
And this year, with the extra that we put in, what are we going to end up doing? 33, maybe? It was 29, I think, plus four and a half?
No, the total of 1.5, which is including ours plus the flex, I believe that gives us 30 miles.
Okay. And 30 miles is... That's probably twice as much, if not more, than lots of counties are paving. As a matter of fact, I've talked to some counties that Commissioner Colgar and I were at some training, and they were talking about doing two or three miles of paving. Most of them weren't even doing paving, and they were just going to patch, which in the long run is, I think, a bad investment. Any other questions on state? Go to agency funding?
The total is 949,368. You can see that's very close to the prior year. Footnote to the top on the airport says 150,000 for both years, but 50,000 of it will be specific for a pilot's program, the training program that's proposed. So there's actually only $100,000 for operations that would be paid out with the normal agency funding. The other will be dependent upon the program actually having participants.
Jim, do you know if they used any of the 50,000 last year?
They've not... They have not invoiced me for any, no.
Okay.
My understanding is that due to COVID and the shutdown, essentially shutdown of airlines, that Cape Air had asked them not to add any... They would keep the ones that were in the program, but they didn't want to add any because they didn't know... You know, part of the program is Cape has agreed to bring them on as employees of Cape Air and pay back any debt that they have on... And they didn't want to have people that they were paying that they weren't using.
Right. That's my understanding, too. Also, with fewer flights, the shortage of pilots has gone away temporarily. I'm sure it's going to pop up again here in the near future.
And they said that actually at their last board meeting, they actually said it may be worse because a lot of people have retired.
Just retired, yeah. So the... One, two things that I would like to know, I know that I've talked to the Commissioners of the... I think it's two years ago, we funded the static... They call it the static show at the airport during the air show that the city puts on. We were asked if we wanted to be a sponsor again this year. The cost is $10,000. I think the consensus was, yes, that we would want to participate with the city. I don't know, is this the place we put it, Jim, or do we put it somewhere else?
I'm probably... George, don't you dare. I mean, I would definitely add it to the initial... The first reading. I'll look at the accounts and pick a spot where to put it, but there's a... We have a community outreach line that probably put it there.
Okay. Secondly, Commissioners, the... I think you are aware of the HL Neblet Center has an academy now to help inner-city youth. It's kind of an after-school and some extra training. They requested, and it's not reflected here, $25,000 additional to help them with that academy. I would recommend that we give it to them as a... 12,000 they use for operations, the 25,000 would be specifically dedicated to the academy and be reimbursed by them sending us a bill for items related directly to that academy. Olga McKissick and I have talked about it. I think it's a... I think it's a good program. Hopefully, it would bear fruit by providing leaders from our minority communities. So I would open it up to yea, nay, or concerns.
I would support that. My question, I guess, is would they come out of the Levi Trust like the rest of the funding?
No, this would be out of the general fund.
And the other thing I wanted to ask, Jim, and I don't mean to catch you off-guard, but when the Levi Trust amount was established, has that ever been changed? Is there any protocol in place where we would look to see if, in fact, that property were being, I guess, commercially rented or something, what it would actually generate in income?
That number's been a flat number since before I started. We spend... To answer your first question, there's no trust, there's no amount.
Okay.
We take that $40,000 that was estimated as the annual crop rental, and we use that $40,000. And that's... Our needs exceed the 40 every time, so it's not accumulating.
Okay.
So to answer your question, no, that has not been modified, and it's circular, right? You can change it to 100, but we... The general fund transfers to the jail fund, which then gives us back that amount. It's circular. You're going to end up in the same place.
I understand.
Okay.
The net is the same. The net's really zero. Whatever we put in goes right back out.
Now, if you were accumulating, we'd look at it differently.
Right.
But we're not accumulating the needs... The agencies that we fund that would qualify for that, there are more of those than there is money.
$51,000.
So which means you just pay more out of the trust and less out of the general fund. Like I said, same net. You'd end up at the same net.
Okay. Any other comment or question?
So the Neblet Center is not on this list at all?
The... No, the... I thought I'd put it on there. Apparently, I did not. So the 12,000 is what we would normally give them for operations. As a matter of fact, you not see much change at all for those Levi Trust folks. The Neblet Center is not in there. That would be an additional 25,000 to the 12, and it would be on a... As I said, it's a one-time, and we found a long time ago that we want to make specifically clear that these are one-time monies. There's no guarantee you get it next year, because when we don't do that, the folks will... Well, they include it anyway in their request the next year, but we have the record that it was a one-time amount. And the only way that they would get it would be that they would submit a bill to the treasurer for expenses related to the operation of that academy. It's kind of like when we grant monies to the arts agencies for special projects.
And I might... I would probably fund that and the other one out of the same place.
Okay.
That keeps it off this... This is pretty much the annual operation money.
Yeah.
I will probably put the other one in the other account, too, so that we can separate for...
Good. To say it a different way, this 25,000 has nothing to do with the 12,000.
No, that's correct.
So we're giving 25,000 plus 12,000.
I failed to understand that we were budgeting the 25. It's not in here anywhere.
The 12, they would be using for their operations. Same thing that we've done for years and years, the 25 is to support the academy that they started last year.
I'd support that.
Okay. All right.
I will put it in the first reading draft, and what I will do, too... We're not going to have... It won't be next week. We don't have time to make all the changes, and I don't have the guidance from the Department of Local Government yet on this.
Give him into that.
So it's that the first reading will be the second meeting in May, and then we'll skip a meeting because I have to have 20 days in between so DLG can get it back. So the second reading will be the second meeting in June. First reading, second meeting, May; second reading, second meeting, June. So that's how it will lay out. But before we have the meeting, I will circulate you a list of every change made to this draft so that you clearly see what's been changed and not changed.
Other than that, I don't... The multi-agency project program is $50,000. We put that in every year, awaiting some people to come in and say, we've got two or three or four agencies that have joined together, and we would like this project because it benefits all of us. Last year, I don't believe that we had... We expended those funds. It was in there, but we did expend the funds. Before we leave, any other questions? Before we leave, any, any other question on agency funding? And by the way, Commissioner Wathen, uh, thanks for serving on the board of that joint, uh, agency, United Way and the foundation that the city and county funded about six hundred thousand dollars each. I'm assuming there's still money there in here.
There is, there's a little over a hundred.
Okay.
Okay.
We're waiting for somebody to, uh,
Apply.
Apply.
Yep. Okay. All right, Jim?
Next page, just a summary. I would skip that page just to look at, we'll look at it each, each department in detail as we proceed, so I, I won't really say much about the summary.
The only, the only thing I would have to say about that is it shows us with a general fund of twenty-nine million, a, the next biggest is solid waste fund of twenty-four million, and a total budget and appropriations for all funds of seventy-eight million dollars.
And of course, the part, you, you have to understand about the twenty-nine million, we don't cycle that every year. We're not gonna spend twenty-nine million dollars. We have a reserve of roughly ten or eleven. That should remain constant. So we're not cycling. That's, a lot of people, when they pick this up, make the mistake of thinking we cycle seventy-eight million bucks a year. We, we do not, because of the, the reserves we, we have, and because of the solid waste closure, post-closure fund, we have to keep intact. So we, we don't spend those monies on an annual basis.
This might be a, a, just an opportunity to, for me to say something editorially, and I know you shudder when I do that, but the way this is set up is dumber than a dickens. I've said it for ten or eleven years, but it's the way that D L G requires. Every one of these headings are a D, D L G requirement, uh, that the treasurer submitted this way, and all hundred-and-twenty counties do it the same way, I think, don't they, Jim?
Well, they're supposed to.
Good, good point.
They're certainly supposed to. Some of the audit reports indicate they might not.
Good, good point.
At, at least a couple that we're aware of.
Yeah. All right. Next item.
Well, the, we'll flip through real quickly. I, I won't have a lot to say about most of these departments unless we have questions, but run through the revenues. We included a couple hundred thousand dollar increase. That's about a normal increase for property taxes. Uh, that's a pretty predictable number.
Not as a result of a tax increase.
Correct. Uh, items from the clerk's office are pretty, what I do is I look at the three-year history on all of these to see if there's a trend. I won't adjust for a one-year trend unless it's measurable. Most of these are, are actually fairly predictable. You do, go ahead.
I just, I wanted to interrupt real quick on the insurance, then you haven't gotten down there to the insurance tax, 'cause I had somebody the other day tell me how dumb it was to take that tax off, uh, and I explained to them, uh, why we did it. Would you explain why we changed the insurance tax rate?
The insurance premium tax rate drops from five point nine to five point two, because as you recall, we are probably gonna only have to collect that four percent piece that we paid for the convention center. We were only gonna have to collect that one more year. We pretty much have to collect it a full year, 'cause we can only change one time, July one. And if we collected the full four percent, we would overcollect. And as you recall, when we did, the, the initial ordinance, uh, requires that once we have collected enough money to service the debt, that portion of the insurance tax should be removed. So we didn't want to intentionally overcollect, so I, I filed in March to decrease that rate from four percent to about, I think, two point three, and that should just about collect the same amount of money that we need to finish servicing the debt. At that point, next year, I will file to remove that piece totally. So that's, this reflects the reduction in that rate.
So what, what we're doing is, we were at four point nine, uh, at some, at some point?
Eight point nine total, four point oh for a convention.
So we added the four point oh for the convention, which is eight point nine, and we're reducing it now by, from four percent to?
I think two point three.
To two point three. That's, that's correct. So that's one point seven. So the insurance tax that folks would pay outside the corporate limits of the city this year would be seven point two. Next year, our anticipated move will be to take that from seven point two to four point nine, and we will be back at the original rate that was instituted in two thousand and nine. So twelve years, thirteen years, in thirteen years, we will have paid off bonds that we anticipated to take twenty years. Pretty, pretty, pretty good move. But that ordinance that created the additional four percent was sunset, meaning that when, when we've collected enough money to pay the bond, we have to take the tax off. We can't, can't leave it on there. And I think Commissioner Castlin, you were on the city commission when this occurred?
I was.
The, the city was not sunset?
The city did not, but it was sunset.
Okay.
The occupancy tax is being increased from three million to three and a half million, three point five million, but I would note that is not a one-year increase. That, that is a trend. I, I did the trend analysis. It's, it's, it's been up above budget, and so this is my projected number, but again, that is not a one-year increase. The tourist tax pass through, you see it drops from a million, three eighty to nine hundred. It's actually worse than that today. I've actually included a potential increase for some recovery of prior business. The pandemic hit that number very hard, uh, as we all know. So the three pieces of that, you'll, you'll see a, a similar trend of drops from what it had been previously budgeted to something lower, but that, that lower number is higher than we're actually getting the last twelve months. So we'll see where it ends up. It's, it's all a pass-through for us, so although I try to make it accurate, it, it is what it is. So our revenues then flow through, so it won't impact fiscal court cash.
Does, does that tourist tax pass-through include the one percent dedicated to the convention center, or is that listed somewhere else?
It's a total, right? This is the total.
So that's, that's a total collected, and of that, three percent goes to operate the C V B.
Yes.
Two percent goes to debt service debt for a couple arts agencies, plus there is an accumulation of excess into a fund that we then distribute, and one percent is turned over to the city to help offset the operating loss of the convention center.
Correct.
Okay.
Again, it was three percent, two percent, one percent, but between two and one.
Three, three percent goes to the C V B.
Got that.
Two percent was placed on originally to debt service. I believe it was our museum and the River Park Center, some capital projects there. And as that's been paid down and the increase, it left some surplus, and that's what we call our House Bill two oh two money.
Okay.
And then one percent was added by this commission at the request of the city when the convent, before, actually, before the convention center opened, and that one percent is used to offset the operating loss of the convention center.
Okay. That tourist tax debt was refinanced twice at a significant discount.
Right.
That's, that's why it's spending off so much money.
I see. And that tourist tax, that's where the, if you looked, that's where you get this fifty thousand dollar multi-agency funding. We take it.
Right.
But it's not necessarily spent. And when we talk about House Bill two oh two, that was the bill that allowed us to spend that money directly. Originally, the only way you could spend it was to debt service, bank loans or bonds or any of that. We said, that's dumb. Why should we pay, have to pay bonding, you know, a bond agent fees or, or interest when we can just use it directly? And they agreed with us, and we're the only county in the Commonwealth that it applies to.
So there's a one percent that goes to state, and it, but does that go directly to them?
We don't collect it.
We don't.
We don't collect it.
They pay direct to the state. We do not collect it.
Yeah, correct. Yeah. And then the state also gets a six percent sales tax on the, on the room.
Right. But they get one percent?
Yes.
From all these, from the same?
And I think that's the money that used to be redistributed to C V Bs and all that, and then they did away with it. So I don't know where it went.
It, it, they, now,
Probably the general fund.
The state decides how all that marketing money is spent.
Yes.
They used to redistribute.
Right.
Based on a matching.
Correct, I remember that.
And they still do a, probably a little matching with it, but most of it, they do themselves.
Yeah. Okay. Go ahead, James.
Uh, I, I don't really have much to say about the rest of the revenues. They're pretty flat. Unless you, unless you have a question. We're continuing the mental health court, the juvenile drug court funding, uh, the Title Four D, which is child support. We get that budget from, from Claude's office, and this is the approximate reimbursement for, for those expenses. But, uh, there's, really, most of these other items are unremarkable.
And a lot of that revenue, I'm, I'm just looking on the back, street lighting district revenue is a pass-through, isn't it? Is that where we collect?
Pretty much.
That money and then send it to the, to Kennedy or to whomever is providing that?
Didn't the A L C, didn't the legislature actually voted in their budget to lower our reimbursements?
The legislator in their budget said, notwithstanding the law or the ordinance or the K R S, that would pay us three percent of the bonded indebtedness. It's about three percent. They said, notwithstanding, they cut it in half. And that's for anyone who had debt prior to two thousand, I think.
Yeah, I think that's the cutoff.
Yeah. Now, there's, there are some who are still debt servicing.
So they weren't really impacted?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So, so this is the second year of that, so we don't really see that change anywhere on any of these lines, and am I right, or?
No, it's, it's in here. It's on the, in the middle of the page, forty-five oh six, oh one.
So it's not a significant decrease?
So the reimbursements.
Well, I suspect that a hundred, or eighty-six thousand, eighty-eight thousand dollars.
Eighty-eight thousand for the piece he's talking about. The rest of it is so big because we,
It's reimbursable.
We get reimbursed for the expenses over there.
Okay. Charlie, it, it took, it went from a, um, roughly three dollars and seventy cents a square foot to a dollar and eighty-five cents a square foot. Is there, is there lease payment to us? Now,
You lost eighty-eight thousand bucks.
We lost eighty-eight thousand dollars. Now, they said that, that, you know, they'd already paid for the, the facility, and we said, we don't care. It's ours. Your name's not on the, and, and besides that, I've always contended, you've gotta look at the total cost of operating the judicial center, which includes a subsidy to the sheriff's department to provide bailiffs over there. So it's a, anyway, thanks for bringing it up.
Well, I know something always warms your heart.
Yes, it has, but warm, warm more than my heart, I can tell you. Next, go ahead, Jim.
If we look at the next page, at the, in the middle of the page where you see all the transfers out, they're transferring about the same to the road department. The jail went up about four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars. Again, we talked about the, the revenue issue with the jail, and again, I think it's gonna require at least that, based on what I'm seeing today. Convention center, you're seeing, you're seeing it drop because of the tax decrease that we talked about. It's a direct result. Money comes into general fund and we transfer it to the bond fund. So that's a direct result of that tax decrease. You see that W K U was paid off. That was the, the last payment on that loan last year, so it goes from six hundred back to zero. And then we have to transfer the public radio system. Probably by the end of this fiscal year, we will have spent most of that five and a half million bucks that we borrowed, and we would just be servicing, servicing the debt.
One, one comment I would make is one of the considerations when we looked at it was with the payoff of the W K U O bond, it gave us the money to move forward with the radio system.
Yeah, it's pretty much,
Pretty much a non-net cost, right?
Yeah, yeah.
How many years was, I don't remember, how many years was that bond for the radio system? Fifteen or twenty?
Uh, let's see, twenty? Do you remember? Twenty, I think.
Typically, it's twenty years would be the, I would be surprised if we did it any less, although for some reason, ten sticks in my brain.
That's right. What are you gonna look at that play?
I know we can pay it off in seven. I think it was ten.
It's, it's stick, because if you look at it, six million dollars, six hundred thousand from the W K U, uh, it, it, that's what I remember was ten years.
Right.
And as, they're non-callable for the first seven. After that, you can do what you want.
Ten years.
Ten years. All right. I hate it when I'm right, Jordan. Any, any other questions or comments on the revenue side before we get into expenses? Okay, Jim?
I mean, I, I don't have a lot to say about these. We can flip through.
Yeah.
I mean, basically, what you're gonna see in the departments are just the, uh, employee costs and benefits that you already know about. So the county judge's department, the county attorney, there's really nothing other than the standard increases. County attorney's a big number, but remember that the majority of those dollars are reimbursed by somebody.
Yeah.
You've got nine hundred thousand by a child support. You've got seventy-seven for mental health court. You've got seventy, seventy-seven, half of that is from the city for juvenile.
If you, if you look at them, most of them, if they have an increase, slight increase, and that's explained away by the two percent cost of living as well as the pension increase. Uh, insurance costs, did our insurance costs go up, Jim?
No. In, in fact, uh, most, most of the departments, I don't know of any that actually increased because they were radically budgeted, but the K E H P plan, uh, is, is so much less than what we were paying. I didn't adjust downward last year on purpose, so most of them are adequate to cover that little increase that they had. I actually ended up decreasing a few because they were just too high.
So commissioners, as you remember, when we first came on board, we went to a self-funded plan through CAECO, which saved us roughly half a million dollars a year for several years. Over a period of time, that cost started ballooning, and we then moved and pivoted quite quickly to the state plan, where we became just another part of a, a larger group, and it stabilized our costs and has held it pretty steady for the last two years. Uh, if you go on down through here, as I said, most of, of the costs are, there's a negligible increase. Fiscal court, if you look under there, there's actually a decrease, and I wanna thank Commissioner Castlin for giving up a couple of his paychecks to make that happen. Uh, the P V A, that's a statutory, uh, contribution based on the value of property in the county. Isn't that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah. Uh, the, uh, county treasurer, uh, went up a little bit, uh, human resources up a little bit.
One thing I need to note, some of the, some of the salaries may look funny, but you have to remember, we have twenty-seven pay periods.
Yeah, good point.
In fiscal year twenty-two. It affected you guys last year in calendar year.
Right.
'Cause you can't, your, your salary is for a calendar year, so we adjusted your salary. But it affects everybody else in fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-two. So on top of the two percent, there's an additional payroll baked in these numbers.
We had, excuse me, election expense. I think we have no elections this year, other than if there's a sp- I think we have no elections this year, other than if there's a special election where there would be a wet/dry vote. But we do have a primary election in this fiscal year, next year. Uh, one of the things that we're going to have to start looking at, and I know Commissioner Wathen and I have attended a couple of demos, but we're, we're looking at replacing voting machines. Jim, I don't know, next two years maybe, voting machines?
That's, that's the plan. Uh, that's the other thing I've got to add in here. I'm glad you said that. The, the clerk's office, you know, as they accumulate their excess downstairs. They usually pay us in the fourth year, but they're not required to wait. I think they've got enough that we're, we're going to use whatever excess they're willing to transfer up in budget buying that many voting machines in this fiscal budget. Whether you do or not is another thing.
Right.
But we're going to budget as if you are.
OMPC, if you look at that, there's no change in, in what we're doing this year.
Can we go back to the elections?
Sure, absolutely.
I know the legislature toyed with the, uh, allowing early voting in voting centers. Would that lessen our need at all for the number of voting machines we have or no?
It, it wouldn't perhaps a little bit. Uh, the, where the real lessening will be, will be the election workers, the poll workers. Because before, let's see, we had eighty precincts. That was reduced to fifty-eight. So you had to have a hundred and sixteen poll workers, just observers.
Right.
Now, if you go and put ten precincts in one place, you're probably going to be down to two, maybe four. You will lessen that, but where you have voting centers, you've got to be able to handle a huge number of people. So I doubt you're going to see a substantial decrease in voting machines. Uh, I think, I doubt that you're going to see that substantial.
But, uh, I, as you said, I attended those demonstrations. One of the things that's a big question to go to your, to answer your question. Um, and it's a little fuzzy form. They're not sure exactly how it's going to translate out. But there was, um, a statement in the new law that said any machine that was used in early voting cannot be used on election day.
Hmm.
Ooh.
And then they were thinking that they may be, there's a, they may be able to, anyway. There's a, I don't, I don't want to get in all the weeds, but that's the question, the interpretation of, of that part of the law. Uh, what they have to keep segregated. So they might end up having more machines unless there's a, uh, anyway. So we'll see what they.
More to come.
More to come, and that's, they're trying to get an interpretation on that.
Okay.
Go, go back to OMPC. Th- these monies, a hundred and fifty-nine thousand is used to operate the zoning side of OMPC. The inspection side, uh, compliance side is run by the fees that they collect, the permits and all those kinds of things. Uh, the economic development is pretty much, uh, you'll see a drop. Uh, and, and that's mostly, if not all of it, is from the, uh, hotel receipts. The, um, we're sending, uh, there's less money to pass through. Courthouse, minor, uh, let's see, what did I have there? It's, it's less money than we had last year. Uh, most of that was because of, of some landscaping that we were doing or repairs that we were doing. Those have been completed, so we have a need. Judicial center is, it's a minor change. Uh, that's in the cost side. Most of that is, as, uh, the treasurer said, is reimbursable. Uh, anything special and over and above those reimbursables, we require that the circuit court clerk get approval from ALC before we start. Uh, operation center is, uh, actually a little bit less. And, and that's, I think, Mark, you told me that's partly, or Jim, partly reallocation of salaries. It's putting more time in another place where the time is.
The budget didn't reflect what we actually do. Now, is the maintenance supervisor, is it actually included in some of, in the judicial center number?
Right.
We weren't budgeting that way. We're just adjusting the budget to reflect what we actually do in payroll.
If you look down at the bottom, the Scherzinger building, that's costing us sixteen thousand dollars a year. Kind of almost what it cost last year. Total general government fund has gone, uh, I mean, it's fifty-three thousand dollars less this year than it was last.
Is our?
Yes.
I know, I know we've got the real ID out there at the operations center. Is that on, does that have its own line somewhere? Or, or is that included in the operations?
It's included. We don't have a separate.
Okay. Even with those extra people out there, we're, we're not, I mean, because that's, that expense is down about thirty thousand.
I didn't hear what you said.
I was just wondering with, with having the real ID out there.
We don't pay that money. That's, real ID is paid by the state, so the expense for the extra people wouldn't be. It's, it's not our expense.
Gotcha.
The only, the only expense that we would have would be any maintenance that goes on.
So we just contracted with them to provide the service.
That's correct.
So where's the rent we get for the, for that? Show up in revenue? Hope that's not a, I should have already caught that probably.
Yeah, that's, I'm sure that Jordan is going to find it over there somewhere.
I don't know if it's in the miscellaneous government. Yeah, it's, it's in the miscellaneous government revenue. We didn't, we don't have a specific revenue line for it.
Okay.
Back, back on the revenue page?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's in oh-one forty-five forty-three.
And being in a fairly new building, there's not a lot of expense to make an up, to do up, Kate, out there. If you go on to page nine, protection to persons and property, juvenile housing, that's thirty thousand dollars that we put in there. That's housing that would occur in Bowling Green. Is that where we sent? So that's, and as you notice, I'm not sure that we ever exceed that, do we, Jim?
Not anymore.
Yeah.
But, you know, we, we used it quite a bit several years ago.
We, we actually divert most of those to either Mary Kendall Home or Saint Benedict, or not Saint Benedict, but Saint Joseph's.
Yes.
Yeah.
Did you say the actual cost is, is he right?
Actual expense for this year right now is zero.
Yeah, and part of it.
Is that because of COVID?
They may not have built it.
Yeah. I think, I suspect part of it's COVID.
Yeah.
Uh, well, and just as an example, you know, we granted an additional expense. Saint Joseph Peace Mission, the way the revenue is determined is the number of kids that are, are sent there. And that's been way down because of COVID, and we were able to grant them an additional operating cost uh, because of the COVID, so. All right, fire department. Uh, Jim, I'm going to let you take us through the fire department.
Well, you got your, your, your salary and benefit increases. If you notice the retirement, that, that number, that's, you know, that they have a big payroll, so that number's almost two hundred grand. It's a big number for the increase. Uh, insurance expense, this is one that I was able to decrease it by fifty thousand. It's just over, over budgeted based on actual, so that's, that's a good decrease. Uh, then part of the increase in the total is, is going to be because of the, uh, the vehicles. We had seven hundred thousand last year and got eight hundred and nine, uh, for this year. Uh, anything else is just kind of standard, standard changes.
EMA, you'll notice that it's within seven thousand dollars of last year's, uh, budget. The, uh, ambulance service, sixty thousand dollars is our portion. Uh, I'm trying to think, Jordan, do you know when is next year when we do a look back? Or is it this year? Next year? And we would renegotiate the contract, I think, at that time. Is that correct? Okay. How's the new ambulance board doing? Well? Okay.
Have they ever established the, I know it's not a budget question, but, but have they ever established what? One of the things they did at the beginning of this contract is they didn't have the, like, the built-in penalty for being slow to respond because they didn't know the territory. They didn't want to be locked into that. And they said, well, let us have either six months or a year or something, it might have been two years, before you establish that. Has that been established yet or do you know?
Their grace period is about to exhaust and penalties are in the contract, but they haven't exceeded.
Yeah.
In any of those run times yet.
They, they've done a pretty good job, I think, in, in their responses. Now, remembering, as you get out into the more rural areas of the county, it takes longer to get there.
Sure.
That's, that's why we have our ball deer fire departments and our page stations responding along with them. The one thing I would question, Jordan, has there been any more talk about, uh, getting them into the network? Local network?
The only reports they've given is that they're still negotiating.
Okay. Any other questions?
They're like insurance network?
Yes, yeah. And when we negotiated a contract, we knew that they were not within the network of a lot of insurance companies. And we're trying to, just trying to push forward.
Gotcha.
Uh, now, when one expense is up minimally, uh, you know, the other state forestry, I don't know. Do we ever send them any money, Jim, state forest?
Yeah, we got a, we got a bill.
Okay.
We got a bill for that on an annual basis.
Okay. Next, next one is general health and sanitation. This is the animal control. Uh, the biggest change as you look down at the bottom is the, uh, vet clinic. That's a one-year expense that'll go away next year. Uh, soil conservation, uh, we gave one an increase several years ago. They added somebody, then their government grant ran out. They wanted us to pick up and take up that extra uh, from that government grant. We did not. Uh, senior community center and R S V P are some support that we give. Uh, services to children and youth, that's, you come back and that's where that Levy Trust. Saint Joseph Peace Mission, the per diem is the same. We've got a hundred and twenty-six thousand. Uh, even in years prior to COVID, I think we were spending like eighty, an average of eighty-five thousand dollars over a three-year period. That's kind of where we came up with the thirty-five thousand that we got them. We figured they would end this year spending fifty, and we would give them the difference between their average, uh, expenses. The, um, I don't know that there is a general charity and welfare. Again, those are for the not-for-profit social agencies. Victims assistance, uh, pretty much is the same as it was last year. That's, that goes through Claude's office.
It does. They have a grant for most of it.
Yeah. So you'll notice that, uh, those services were about even with last year. Recreation and culture, you'll see a decrease in the, uh, capital costs, the building and construction costs. And that's, that's kind of because we are completing that project at Horse Fork Creek Park. We, Mark, any idea when the restrooms will be ready? And, and the playground for all?
Not right now. Uh, we're still working on the plans for the restroom.
Playground for all should be ready by the time we open on Memorial Day, is what I was told.
That's what we're shooting for.
Okay, the, uh, the restrooms, I'm going to guess, or sometimes this summer, we'll get away from the old porta potties. Uh, there is a, a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in the budget to take care of a lot of items that, that have, uh, gone un-repaired or un-reworked over a period of time. Uh, again, you see the tourist commission pass-through or, or the receipts is considerably less than we've had in the, in the past. And I'm assuming this is the pass-through that we would send, this is the three percent that we would send over to the CBB.
It is.
So I want to say thanks to those guys, George. They've done a heck of a job maintaining, staying open with almost a quarter of a million dollars less money.
They did a lot of things. They had, they could use their imagination to get there.
I think Mark Calitri has given some good leadership as well as their board.
It's a strong board too.
Yeah. Uh, cultural programs, uh, pretty much the same. Uh, total recreation and culture actually has dropped just a little bit, but my, the vast majority is a reduction in capital projects. Airport board, you'll see a hundred and fifty thousand. We talked about that earlier. A hundred thousand for operations, fifty for their school transportation. This is the busing of non-public school, uh, students. We pay, uh, we bus three, or we budget three hundred thousand. Jim, it hasn't been three hundred thousand in, I don't know how long.
Correct, and I don't really worry about modifying it. They're about to bring you a new contract. It still says three hundred. Because the way it actually works is if we pay, if we pay less, then they adjust the next year. So they, like, we should have just got the fourth quarter bill for seventy-five and didn't get a bill. Because we've already, we've already paid close enough to their expense. They're not going to bill us for the last seventy-five.
Right.
So, yeah, e- even though it says three hundred, it's a placeholder for a normal year. Hadn't been normal for a year or two. We're coming in lighter, so we're either not paying it or it's a credit off the first payment.
Right.
In the next year. And the money I asked for back from the state is the same way. So my answer is, it doesn't matter. We can budget a hundred, two hundred, three hundred here.
Right.
And we're going to be at the same place. So it, we need something that's reflective, obviously. You don't want it distorted. Uh, but you're, you're correct. The last year is nowhere near three hundred, but they simply didn't bill us the last payment and a half.
Okay. Uh, there's a debt service with Friendly Village loan repayment. You're aware of what we did out there. As a matter of fact, guys, I had somebody come up to me yesterday, and I can't remember where it was. And, oh, it was at, I ate at, uh, the Moonlight, Took My Lovely Bride Out. Uh, and he said, be sure to thank all the commissioners for what you did at Friendly Village. He said, I know I've told them all before, but he wanted to say that again. Uh, I, I, I think what we did there and at Cedar Hills probably will rank very high in the things that we've done for the citizens in our county.
That is the KIA loan.
Yes.
And then if you look over on the revenue page, there is a revenue amount of the same amount budgeted. Because we're, RWRA is collecting that money for.
Reimbursing to us.
Yeah. We've actually collected sixteen-four through March thirty-first.
Okay. Uh, capital projects, you'll, you'll look down through there. Uh, most of them are about the same as they were. Well, it is exactly the same. That public safety grade radio system, that's just the expense that we think we're going to see in this coming year, Jordan? Okay. And that's offset by the revenue.
For instance, if they spend six hundred between now and June thirtieth, we won't spend.
Right.
A million too.
Right.
That's just a remainder. We didn't really know, when we're, while we're doing this budget, we don't really know how much we're going to spend in the next few months. If, if I get a better number by first reading, we may lower it, but again, it just is what it is.
What's the ambulance grant, the ten-five on capital projects?
Ambulance grant, that's a state program and, and it's just a pass through.
It's been there forever. It's, it's from the, is it the transportation department?
I don't know that it's from there.
KYTC, it may go through KYTC.
Yeah.
Okay.
The school, but, yeah, that's, that's been a grant that's been available, the prior ambulance service tapped it every year. And so they'll, we have to be the flow-through. They can't pay them direct. You have to have a government flow-through. So they'll apply for the grant. We'll get the ten or ten thousand five or whatever the number is, and then flow it through to them.
Okay. Administration, you look, very minimal increase, reserve for budget transfer dropped just a, a tiny bit. Uh, the, uh, other government agencies, Department of Juvenile Justice, CDBG grants, all those things are, are, you'll see a reduction, somewhat a reduction. Uh, total administration is about what it was, little less. Uh, total administration is about what it was, a little less, and total government expense has hopped up about $500,000 overall. And that probably is reflected mainly in the 2% increase in salaries and the increase in pension costs. If you go to the next page, that's the Road and Bridge Fund. We about beat that one to death. Uh, it, it gives you the, uh, you'll notice the, the revenues this year are just a little bit less than they were last year. Expenses just a little bit less than they were last year under engineering. Uh, thank goodness that the engineer's family decided that we could not pay him for a couple of pay periods.
So Jim, is this one of those where you had to, to adjust the, uh, insurance, employee insurance? Because I noticed it's down 100,000.
Yeah.
So-
Yeah, it's, it was just, that's how much savings we had going to KEHP.
Okay, thank you. Jail operations, uh, you'll see a, the revenues. One of the things that you'll look at is the transfer out. Uh, well, the jail's gonna require a little more cash this year than it did last because of a reduction in receipts. Uh, if you look at the federal prisons, they're up about a half a million dollars. But if you look at the state prisons, we kept it, it's the same as last year, but I don't think it's gonna-
We're not gonna make 4 million bucks.
No, we're not, we're not even gonna-
Right now, I'm saying in either year.
Yep.
I, I don't think, I think that number's a little high.
Yep.
How, how much you think we're missing by, Jim?
Let me see what totally, I'm good, up, up to half a million, I'm guessing.
Now, there is, there are some-
There were. But we transferred enough to our, just our regular transfers to the supplement, they're in good shape.
We'll cover it, we'll cover it.
Well, yeah, I'm, we have, we have enough sitting there. I, I'm hoping we'll get through this year, but I've gotta file a budget amendment anyway for the additional cares money we got. I'm probably gonna throw a half million into the jail just in case. I don't think we'll have to hit it. But normally, we have a million bucks that we don't touch. I, I think we're gonna touch it.
Okay.
Like, for instance, right now, we're sitting at, we're sitting at 2 and 1/2 million through March 31st. It's not gonna get to 4 million bucks in, in three months.
One of the things that I might mention is, last General Assembly, they changed some of the reimbursements on state prisoners to, I, I forget, I believe it's like a $2 additional prisoner, and then they've got some, if we're providing programs, that we can get $10 back, uh, a day. But it's not gonna come anywhere close to covering that cost. Uh, if you look at the jail operations-
Is, is, let me jump up through the contract housing. I know it said drop to zero. Is that, is that folks that used to travel, use this as a stopover?
That would be McLean County, Vanderburg County.
There wasn't much of that in last year's anyway.
It, it would be any contract housing outside of our own prisoners and agreements with the state and the Fed. Uh, McLean County, I'm, I'm, I'm sitting here, I don't know. I ca, I just-
They were about 300,000 worth.
I don't think they were ever that much.
Not that much.
No. Uh, but we did have a, we had an agreement, I believe it was Vanderburg County, and we shut that agreement down because we were bringing in federal prisoners and the feds, we negotiated up to about $52, $53 a day plus transportation.
Yeah, the answer is, is because of more county prisoners?
Yeah.
Or more feds, or no beds.
That's correct. That's correct.
Thank you.
Uh, operation costs, pretty close to what they were last year. Uh, total expense, uh, for that, for the jail is just, it's $50,000. It's just a redu, it's not an increase in cost as much as it is a reduction in revenue. Uh, LGA, a little bit of an increase. Uh, I mean, everything else is pretty much the same. Uh, you look under solid waste construction, uh, you have transfer out to another fund. What, we've got a me, we're just, that's just reflecting those cells. We actually are building, starting the construction of a contained waste cell, as well as another CD and D cell. Uh, a lot of it is, is, uh, CD and D, I don't know if any of you, I know Commissioner Law then you were out there. Remember, we built that cell, then we had the windstorm, and it was like a mountain of roofing materials.
Roofing is unbelievable.
Oh, it was just, it filled up in, next to no time. Uh, but all those expenses are covered by revenues. Uh, the operating fund, again, is up about $700,000. Uh, the, uh, expenses are down a little bit. Most of that, uh, reduction, uh, is in capital equipment. But next year, it, it's one of those things that it goes up and down based on whatever you're needing to replace over, from year to year. Transfer station, uh, operations, operation cost is up a little bit. Um, the administration cost, a little bit. Uh, total, a total, um, expenses, uh, you'll see are about $2 million more, and-
The primary increase there is not really increase, it's-
Yeah.
It's the increase in the reserve. I wasn't reflecting the total cash reserve, but I needed to reflect it all-
Yeah.
Because we're gonna start constructing, and I need enough cash in there to pay some out. So that, that creates an arbitrary increase. It's, it's not expense, it was just reserve.
So let's, let's talk a little bit, I'm gonna come back to you, Jim, and let's talk about our debt service. The bond sinking funds and, and bond repayments.
Well, as you know, the, the, the debt continues to decline from, from a high since I started in the 50, 52 million dollar range, to something less than 12 million dollars. Uh, we, we really, especially from the economic world, we have, we have like no debt. It's so moderate, it's just a non-event, so there's not many issues left. Uh, so all the bond fund is doing right now is reflecting the continued payment of these issues, of which the convention center one's the biggest, and that one will disappear after next year. Because that, that will be the, we, we dropped the rate. Well, let me rephrase it. We won't, it won't disappear on the payment side, but the, the revenue side will disappear. We can't pay it off. We will continue to service the debt, but we will have collected enough cash to service it the remainder of the time.
Actually, the way it read was that when you pay the debt off or you accumulate enough funds in reserve, then you can re, reduce the, the insurance tax rate. Uh-
All of, you know, the, the tourism, the detention center, the complex ones, all expire in 2028, I believe.
Yeah.
So, I mean, the, there's, there's nothing on here that's gonna continue much longer.
As you said, in, in the scheme of things, our debt, the cost of debt service compared to our total budget is miniscule. It's very good in the real world. Uh, if you look over on page 26, you're gonna see the economic development. There's a revenue in there, and then if you, if you look at the, uh, expense, those are really not expenses.
Those are just, I have to make the fund balance.
Right.
That's a potential, they are not specifically designated for any projects.
Uh, to do, let's see, total expenses. Solid waste closure, you're all aware, these are things that we have to do, that we, we maintain, uh, reserves. These are restricted reserves, uh, solid waste post-closure. All has to do with, at some point in the future, when we've gotta close that fund, uh, that, uh, solid waste site down, that we are guaranteeing that we will have money in a reserve to maintain it from now through eternity.
Is there ever, do we ever get to a point where they say you have enough in your closure fund?
There's a formula. We, we've dropped it since Smith's been here.
Right.
We used to have to contribute, I think it was a dollar and a quarter and a dollar. That's been dropped to a dollar and then 25 cents. So yes, there is a formula where you look at how funded that is, and if you ever reach a point where it's fully funded, yes, that is, you can stop.
Yep. The, uh, health insurance, I th, I asked Jim about this. We show, we've got $300,000 in, in the health insurance fund.
This is the self-insurance piece that we no longer need. Uh, but there have been, up through, up through now, there have still been invoices bleeding through, whether they were appeals or whether they, for a variety of reasons, just haven't come through there yet. I'm just simply waiting for the activity to stop, and then we'll write a check back to the general fund and get this out. Most of this will come back to the general fund.
Yep. Commissioners, that pretty much is the budget in, in a nutshell. Everything else is just a, I mean, it, it just breaks down some of these funds and, and, uh, talks about how we're spending the money and, and the capital cost. I don't, if we go through that, we would be going through the exact same thing that we just-
Go through that last part. If you want to see the specific detail of any department, it's like, you can look at that last section. It's got every capital item lined out. You can, you can see that's it, but it's, it would be, we've already gone over.
Right.
We just didn't read every individual line, but the lines are in there.
Questions or comments?
I'll just make a comment that I've, I feel very good about this budget. I feel very good about where we are as a county. And when we talk about the debt, you know, my, my preaching to my kids and to anybody else that I interact with is that debt's not your friend. And, and, uh, for us to do what we've done with our debt since we've been members of fiscal court, I think is, is a good, is a good thing. Uh, we've, we've done it without raising, uh, kinda had to do it with the, the, uh, we delayed the, the increase of the, uh, occupational tax, uh, due to COVID and, and our needs were, were not what we had anticipated. And, and, uh, so I feel very good about where we are, despite the challenges we've had the past year.
Commissioners, speaking about that, uh, tax, the, we delayed the occupational tax. How long do we have? If, if, what's the drop dead date if we decided not to, uh, and I, if we wanted to delay that again? How long do we have?
Well, let me put it this way. You did it last year in, what, August? Yeah, we notified payroll companies, and you won't believe how many people are calling me. They didn't get it changed. It's been, it's, it's been a mess. So my recommendation is, make sure that's what you want to do, because you, the payroll companies, it's a big deal. So, I mean, I don't know how many employee issues there have been because they didn't get it changed. And we did it in August and notified them, so certainly not, not after August. We need to do it by then.
So they're doing, they went on and made the increase. They didn't get the delay.
They raised the rate, and now they've gotta deal with refunds and whatever else.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, there's been a number of them. We not, I mean, we notified them, we put it, just like we did the increase, it was in the paper. It was, it's on the meeting, and we, our administrators sent letters to all the processors. Somehow, I think a lot of them saw it and thought it was the same thing. I don't think they read it close. They just saw the numbers, and I don't think they picked up that it got deferred, so. Yeah, there's been, I've got, I've received a number of calls from both employees and processors about it.
But this assumes that the other portion is, goes into effect January 1, 2022?
It does.
That's, okay.
It does.
I'd like to thank everybody, too, because this past year's been a, this past year's been a struggle, uh, for everybody, and for us to be able to maintain, still have money in the bank, pay our bills, and, uh, and continue on moving forward, I think, uh, everyone's done a great job, especially Jordan, you and Jim. Uh, awesome job. Thank you.
The, the budget does reflect the deficit of about a million four, intentionally. We had a reserve, and the current budget assumes that, and we probably would absolutely have that deficit, based on what I'm seeing, had it not been for some government money that we got to offset it. So because we did get it offset, we have continued that deficit to, to make sure the reserve doesn't get too high. It's not too high, but you don't want to grow it past a certain point. But this budget does assume a million four deficit, so anything else you do to it will increase that deficit.
In, in the end, I guess, the reasons for us to raise the occupational tax and that profits tax hasn't changed, absent COVID.
No, the, the initial reasons that you approved before, right, still exist.
Right. And, and, excuse me, those one-time monies from the Fed are, won't be there the next time. And we've gotta be able to depend on, on our own revenues here within, in the county. The good thing, the, the, the thing that Davis County is blessed with, and I'd say the city of Owensboro as well, the thing that we're blessed with is that our general revenue, our fund stream, revenue stream is pretty balanced and diversified. And while we took a little bit of hit when coal went down the tubes, wasn't much. Uh, you know, while we took a little bit of a hit on occupational tax because of the closing of some businesses, wasn't much. Uh, it, it's a very balanced revenue stream, and I think that's the thing that we gotta, to look at. I want to appreciate, I say that I appreciate, uh, all the commissioners liaison that you did with your departments, that, uh, I've said it in the past, I think it's a good budget, it's a balanced budget, and it does the things that we are constitutionally and statutally required to do. So with that, I'm gonna, unless there's any other comment or question, this budget workshop is closed.